Good evening. I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the York County School Board for Monday, September the 25th. Good evening, everybody. We're happy to have you with us this evening. We're going to go ahead and get started with our pledge leader. As I talk about Madeline Dickens, she's already here. Madeline is a 4th grader at Seaford Elementary School. She is the daughter of Melissa and Chris Davidson of Seaford. She is a smart, friendly, and outgoing with a humorous attitude. She's a great friend to her peers and a sweet big sister to her four-year-old brother, Ryan, and baby brother Campbell. Madeline is very involved in clubs at Seaford Elementary. She's a member of the We Deliver Postal Club, K Kids Club, Marnik Butterfly Club, and participates in the Good News Club. Madeline is a good student of Seaford Elementary and does an outstanding job in all of her subjects, carrying, earning honor roll every quarter last school year. Madeline loves to play basketball and enjoys horseback riding. She has been involved in ballet, tap, and jazz at her grandmother's studio since she was two years old. She is also active in Girl Scouts. Her favorite thing to do is to cook and to make up new recipes. She loves sharing the meals and treats she comes up with. She often bakes goodies for her teacher and the other 4th grade teachers to enjoy. She has an entrepreneurial spirit and wants to open her own bakery one day. Seaford is proud to have Madeline Dickens lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join, stand and join, Madeline.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madeline. And my request of you, Madeline, is that when you have produced your first recipe book, we have a signed copy. Okay? That's a promise. We move now to our Seniors of the Month. I am going to start with Bruton High School. Bruton High School is pleased to honor our September Senior of the Month, Rand Perry. Rand is here. And parents, brothers, sisters, everybody who's with you, stand up. And I'm gonna share some information with you about Rand. Rand is an exceptional scholar and a dedicated Bruton leader. He excels in all academic areas and contributed immensely to Bruton High School's Panther Band. Rand has earned a grade point average of 4.6071 and has also earned recognition as an AP Scholar with distinction. This award is granted to students who have taken five or more exams and have earned an average score of 3.5. Rand has taken six exams since the 9th grade and has earned an average score of 4.5. Rand is not only a remarkable scholar, he's also a devoted leader. Rand is currently the senior class president, National Honor Society president, brass captain, baritone section leader, and vice president of the Bruton Panther Band. During this year at Bruton, he has served as the junior class president and member of the debate club, Model United Nations, Tri-M Music Honor Society, Bruton and SOA Theater Productions, Basketball Prep Band, and the Bay River's number one first-place Scholastic Bowl Team. When Rand is not studying or leading student organizations at Bruton, he works as a colonial country dancer, as a colonial country dancer at Colonial Williamsburg and a political campaign volunteer. We look forward to Rand's continued success this year in our school community. Please join me in congratulating Rand Perry as the September Senior of the Month from Bruton High School. Do we get lessons in dancing? Mr. Richardson, you have Grafton High School.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Christina Jefferson, if you could stand up where you're at. And with your family, any family that came with you, if they could just stand right there. Thank you. Christina is a very involved student who works hard to make Grafton High School the best it can be. She's been the class president, or she was, has been the class president since 9th grade. She's an active member of the yearbook newspaper team and has served as editor of pop culture and editor of the student life. She's also a member of FBLA and will be joining the Key Club this year. Her dedication to academics is clearly seen with her 4.26 grade point average, which places her at the top 10% of her class. She is part of the York County Honors Program as well as the National Honor Society and the Spanish Honor Society. Christina participates in community outreach program called the Jack and Jill and serves as president of the teen group where they work to cultivate youth leaders. She's also part of the Youth Volunteer Corps where she's helped with the Peninsula Food Bank and sang and played the piano for members of the local retirement community. Christina enjoys music and taught herself how to play the piano. She also attended the Blues Kids Summer Camp for two summers where she was a lead singer for her group. In the future, she'd like to study women's healthcare concentrating on the area of OBGYN and continue to make a difference for our community. Let's welcome this month's Senior of the Month for Grafton High School.
And Dr. George, you have Tab High.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Haywood. It's my pleasure to introduce Tab High Senior of the Month, Eunice Namkun. And I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. When you think of a student who really makes an impact at Tab High, it is Eunice Namkun. Whether she is speaking as one of the 21 national student ambassadors on behalf of the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, or helping our varsity field hockey team win state titles, Eunice excels in all of her many endeavors. With a 4.8571 GPA and attending our Governor's School for Science and Technology, Eunice still finds time to attend the World Championships in Robotics, win the Community Service Award from Bacon Street for her substance abuse leadership, and be recognized by the State House and Senate for her role in promoting tobacco control among students. This year, she serves as a president of the Student Body SCA at Tab. She conducts research through the Governor's School to help keep our oceans clean. She volunteers at the Mariners Museum, is the District 5 representative on the York County Youth Commission, is an American Legion Girl State attendee, a Wyss Street State Ambassador, and a Virginia Foundation Task Force manager, belongs to five National Honor Societies, and is a delight to all those who come in contact with her. I have to catch my breath, excuse me. Eunice is a phenomenal leader and spokesperson for Tab High and York County. When she has a passion, she pursues it to improve the lives of others. Eunice plans to study material science or electrical engineering in college. Tab is honored to present Eunice as our September Student of the Month and proud to call her a Tiger. Welcome, Mom and Dad. I'm sorry I didn't speak. Thank you. Congratulations, Eunice.
And I have the honor of introducing to you from York High School, Helen Fisher. If Helen will stand, and parents, brother. York High School is pleased to announce Helen Fisher as the September Senior of the Month. Helen is actively involved in the community and is a standout amongst her peers academically. Helen's hard work and stellar marks in her classes have earned her highest honors each year, an acceptance into the National Honor Society, the Spanish National Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta. In addition to being a standout peer academically, she is also an outstanding athlete. She has lettered in both swimming and tennis at York High School. In her spare time, she also serves as the Junior Assistant Swim Coach for the Edge Hill Eels. Helen has shown her Falcon pride over the years through her involvement in the Student Council Association. She has served as the SCA treasurer, has sat on the SCA Advisory Board, and currently serves as the SCA president. Amongst overseeing all SCA events, managing classes, participating in sports, and many other things, she still finds time to volunteer with the Girl Scouts. She was elected by her troop members to be a lead troop, to lead a troop for a year and also attended the Girl Scout Leadership Institute in 2015. York High School is proud to have Helen Fisher as part of the Falcon family. Please join me in congratulating her. We always love this. This is our first board meeting for this year that we get to recognize our students, and this is part of the time that we always would look forward to. We move now to our Student Service Award winners. Dr. Shandor is going down front, and Dr. George, you're gonna start with Grafton High.
I am. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Yenna Chu from Grafton High School. Ms. Catalda, could you come up with Yenna Chu, please? It is with great pleasure that Grafton High would like to honor Yenna Chu as our Student Service Award recipient. Yenna is an 11th grade student who gives countless hours of her time and energy to both the school and the community. She is an active member of the Special Olympics Club, and she has participated in the Polar Plunge, Tidewater Tip-Off Basketball Event, the Special Olympics Summer Games in Richmond, the Special Olympics Soccer and Swim Team, and the Smart Swim Program. Yenna has organized programs to help students with intellectual disabilities during lunchtime and gym time, as well as greeting them each morning and helping them off the bus. Yenna was invited to Woodside High School to speak about the Special Olympics Club and share Grafton's story. She is an active member of the Key Club and has participated in Toys for Tots, Ringing of the Salvation Army Bell, the Kiwanis Barbecue, as well as being part of the Seatbelt Challenge. Yenna is part of our varsity swim team where she qualified for the state championship. She is involved with the varsity tennis team and Model United Nations. Her talents also extend musically where she is part of the Bay Youth Symphony Orchestra where she exceeds as a cellist. Yenna, thank you so much. Thank you for all you do. We're very proud of you.
And I have the next Student Service Award recipient, if Rebecca Jones from Seaford Elementary will come forward with Principal Christina Head. Rebecca Jones is a 5th grader at Seaford Elementary School. She is the daughter of David and Angela Jones of Seaford. Rebecca is an active student at Seaford Elementary. She has participated in the Marnik Butterfly Club, We Deliver Postal Service Club, and the Girls on Track Team. Rebecca also has been very involved with student government as an SCA representative in 3rd and 4th grades. Rebecca has been Citizen of the Month at Seaford Elementary for many years and has been on honor roll each school year. She enjoys learning and the enrichment in the Extend Program. Outside of school, Rebecca loves to do gymnastics. She also likes to be creative with arts and crafts. She spends time planting flowers and gardening and loves to organize things. She regularly attends church at Cavalry Assembly of God where she is involved in the Stars Program. This three-year program requires completion of 27 units with activities and memorization. She's planning to finish the program this school year and take the test to become an Honor Star. Rebecca is great at encouraging others and is thoughtful and kind. Rebecca is a deserving recipient of this Student Service Award. Please join me in congratulating Rebecca. We move now to our community volunteers for the month. And Mr. Richardson, you have Grafton High.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trish Johnson, is she here? You come on up with Ms. Catalda? So, Grafton High School would like to recognize Trish Johnson as Volunteer of the Year. Ms. Johnson has been an active participant in a wide range of Grafton events and is currently president of the Band Boosters. She has been with the Band Boosters for four years and has been indispensable in handling a huge job of distributing and caring for the uniforms for the marching and concert bands. She has assisted Mr. Kirsh with communications even prior to becoming president. Additionally, Ms. Johnson has been active in the PTSA and is currently serving as Recording Secretary and After Prom Chair. Both positions require hours of time and a myriad of talents and gifts that Ms. Johnson shares willingly. Her organizational and communication skills have been an asset to the Clipper community, and it's our pleasure to honor her for her unfudging energy, good cheer, resourcefulness, and commitment to making Grafton great. Congratulations.
And Dr. George, you have Seaford.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Haywood. Next, I'd like to call up our next volunteer, Laura Hogan and Christina Head. Laura Hogan is the mother of two children, Erin and Kate, and the wife of Donald Hogan. As soon as she arrived as a new parent two years ago, she immediately became actively involved in the PTA. After her first year at Seaford Elementary School, she was elected to the PTA Board as president and held many chair positions. Mrs. Hogan was the chair of the PTA Fundraising Committee for two years. She planned and implemented a very successful fundraiser called the Walk-a-Thon that raised over $26,000 for our school PTA. She has already spent her summer working on the upcoming October Walk-a-Thon. She also volunteers, excuse me, as a library helper in the school library. Mrs. Hogan has implemented new ideas for Seaford Elementary School such as used shoe collection for the needy and school supply kits for parent convenience. She's always on the lookout for opportunities for benefits for Seaford Elementary. When she's not at our school, her outside hobbies include going to the beach, taking family trips, being crafty with her girls, and of course, volunteering. She says she volunteers not only because it feels good to be involved, but it gives her away to assimilate into the community. She hopes that she is setting a good example for her daughters and that they too will get involved in their own community. Seaford Elementary is proud to honor Mrs. Hogan with the Volunteer of the Month. Thank you.
We now have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. If Madeline, who did our pledge, will come forward, our Student Service recipients, Rebecca and Yenna, and our Seniors of the Month, Rand, Christina, Eunice, and Helen. We have with us this evening Mrs. Sandra Allen, a York Foundation for Public Education Board Member, helping with the presentations. Our recipients will receive special gifts from Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet. They are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet. I was waiting to see that all cell phones went down. Hopefully, I didn't jump the gun too quickly. We have two more presentations, and then we're gonna take a break to come down and greet you all. Dr. Shandor, Accent on Academics.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. This evening's Accent on Academics is the Bluebird Habitat Project. Bruton High School's project was sponsored by the Virginia Bluebird Society and the 48 School Yard Habitats Outreach. Students in the Biology and Ecology classes track the development and growth of the bluebirds from nesting to incubation to hatching. To share more about this project is Ms. Arletha Dockery, Bruton High School principal. Ms. Dockery.
Good evening, Dr. Shandor, school board members. Bruton High School is proud to present the Habitat Bluebird Project this evening. We're really excited about this project as it gave our students an opportunity to learn more about bluebirds. Tonight, presenting this project, we have our Teacher of Ecology and Biology, Ms. Amy Lockwood. We also have our students, Junior Ms. Anora Morgan and our Senior Isaiah Guest. I'll ask them to come up and present the project to you at this time.
Last spring, my Biology and Environmental Science classes had the opportunity to observe real science in action through a bluebird nest cam that we graciously received from the Virginia Bluebird Society. The purpose of this grant was to promote education on bluebird conservation. The grant awarded our students to live-watch a bluebird pair as they prepared for their young. I wanted to share this opportunity not only with my students, but the entire school, so we set up a TV in the center hallway for all to view. What a buzz this created. Students and staff throughout the school were talking about the baby bluebirds hatching. Teachers wanted to help and students wanted to know more. It was amazing to see such interest. Students from other classes came to ask questions about the birds. It was not unusual to see students run down the halls to report to me what the bluebirds were doing. Sometimes it was a bird hatching, other times they wanted to tell me that the mother was feeding her chicks. Now, I would like to let, introduce you to two of my students so that they can tell you their thoughts on the lesson that they learned. This is Anora Morgan and Isaiah Guest. Anora?
I've seen baby birds before, but never that close or that young. What I found most interesting about the bluebirds was seeing them hatch and grow bigger and bigger every day. It amazed me how fast they grew. My feelings as I watched the bluebirds going about their daily routines on the TV screen in the hallway were happiness, amazement, and excitement. I reported their progress daily to Ms. Lockwood, even on the days that I didn't have her class. Learning about the bluebirds and knowing that our class helped to increase their dwindling populations made me have a better understanding of why we need to preserve not just bluebirds, but all of nature. I would like to tell the people that made this possible, thank you very much. This was the very first time I have seen birds hatch, and I would have never had that opportunity if it were not for this grant.
I've actually seen baby birds before. My dad owns an African Great Bird, and we got to see it hatch the day we got it. What I thought was interesting is how fast these birds grow. In just a couple of weeks, they had fully grown their feathers, and just a couple of weeks, my birds didn't grow their feathers. It took them about two months. At first, I was disgusted in the birds, because of the way they looked, but after a while, they started to look beautiful when they started growing their feathers. What I did find interesting is how the parents would take turns. One would stay and guard the young while one would go in and get food. All summer, I kept on looking out for bluebirds and noticed the difference between birds in captivity and birds in the wild, the way birds act around other birds and people. What I'd like to say to people who made this possible is thank you for giving me and my classmates a chance to have hands-on learning with this new experience. I can say it's much better than sitting in class taking notes. Thank you.
Fantastic. I have a question. And my question is, I noticed on the pictures on Day 6, you held the nest in your hand. So, how soon can you hold the nest? Where was the guardian parent at that time? Did they attempt to swoop down and protect their babies? Just how, what's the earliest you can manipulate a nest and not disrupt it?
Well, the parents will always stay with the babies until they're ready to actually leave, but I didn't see the parents in there with them at the time, so I'm guessing they were probably out getting more stuff for the nest or food.
And they didn't attack you?
No.
Okay.
They were always around waiting, though.
They're around and watching?
Yep.
Okay.
Great program.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our last presentation. We have two Boy Scouts here with us tonight, and I know the motto is be prepared, so I'm gonna ask Nathan Haas and Patrick Donahoe to come forward, come to the mic, and tell us a little bit about yourselves, your rank, and what badge you're working on. And when I say that, I have two sons who are Eagles, so I know the motto.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Haas. I am the current junior at Grafton High School. My rank is currently a Life Scout, and I'm working toward my Eagle. I'm in the process of planning my project of building benches at Grafton High School to work on my Eagle, and I'm currently working on the Communications Merit Badge, which is why I'm here tonight, to get different, an opposing views on a certain topic, an issue that I would then write a report about to help me earn my Communications Merit Badge, as well as earn my Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, in which I must attend a community meeting and view the different inputs all of you have to give on a certain issue.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Donahoe. I am a sophomore at Tab High School. I'm a Life Scout and Boy Scouts, and I'm working towards my Eagle. I'm also working on the Communications Merit Badge and the Citizenship in the Community. And, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for being with us tonight. The boys are gonna take a few moments, take a break, and we're gonna come down and greet We are ready to resume our meeting. First of all, I will ask if there's any unfinished business. I don't think we have any. And we move to our two presentations. The first is WHRO. Dr. Shandor, if you want to do introductions.
Sure. I'll welcome to the podium Mr. Bert Schmidt, WHRO's President and Chief Executive Officer. And is Mr. Callahan joining you, or we'll just wait?
He's there for backup in case we ask a hard question.
In case something happens during this presentation, Brian Callahan, Chief Education Officer, will join him. So, it's all yours, Bert.
Madam Chair, Dr. Shandor, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to speak with you today. We have provided you, as we do every year, the 2016-17 Annual Impact Statement, and I'll be referring to that. So, I think you all have copies, I hope. Yes? Good? So, I'm just gonna go through this very briefly, but I wanted to highlight on page 1, just some of the leadership from the division. Jim Richardson, thank you for being the representative, the board representative to the Hereta Group. Dr. Shandor, of course, with the superintendents. And you should know that Dr. Shandor is a part of our Regional Virtual School Planning Group now, as we're talking and conversations about creating a regional virtual school. Also, I should note that Reggie Fox, part of the TAC, is a part of that conversation as well, so York is well-represented in those strategic plans that we've been having. And we just want to shout out to Len Donvita, who understands, I don't know if that's public knowledge or...
Today it was.
He's retiring, but he's been working with WHRO for a very long time, so congratulations to Len on his retirement. Page 2, our Educated Resources. A couple of things to highlight here. The first item is E-Media VA. This is an educational repository of digital assets that your teachers can use. It could be audio, video, games, apps, pictures, really anything you can digitize. It's correlated to Virginia Standards of Learning. We have about 100, 100, what are we at today? About 140,000 learning objects in the system, have about 170,000 accounts, a contract with the Department of Education to provide this free to every student in the state. That's a service that the Hereta Schools came to us years ago and asked us to build. We built that for all of the schools years ago. We do a lot of training now with it. We have a full-time person, that's what he does around the state, and 24 of your teachers have taken advantage of that training. And so, that's E-Media VA. Item number 2, lots of special topic forums. You can see the list on the document. Four of your educators took advantage of that. We do a lot of professional development through our teacher line service. Five of your teachers... Five of your teachers took advantage of this Technology Integration Training System. I should note that they are, you can get graduate credit through JMU or recertification through our Teacher Line Service. We have a relationship with JMU, so great for teachers that can't get out otherwise to do professional development. On page three, other professional development, you can see we do Code to Learn Sessions, Digital Citizenship Modules. Many of your teachers have taken advantage of those professional development opportunities. And we're now into the workforce development space. We have a site called Skills Online. We offer 4,000 courses in workforce development, 19 different industry sectors. We also have Workplace Rethoughtenings Modules, so these skill sets, these, some people call them soft skills, that you need to be a quality employee. We have that within Skills Online, free for every school to use, free of charge. And we also now have an online GED program. It's a preparatory course for online GED through, through Skills Online. It's new, just came, started this past spring. Page four, our Student Services. As, as you know, I hope you know, we had developed 26 online high school courses for you. We're the manufacturer, we give them to you, and you use them how you want. And we have developed algebra, trig, astronomy, biology, chemistry, earth science, economics and personal finance, English nine, 10, 11, and 12, French, geometry, health and PE nine and 10, math analysis, oceanography, physics, psychology, Virginia-US history, Virginia-US government, world geography, and world history one and two, along with an online methodology course. We've made them, we've given them to you, you can modify them however you want, but this is, helps you meet that, that requirement to have, make sure every student takes an online course. We've developed all these for you. We've also, those courses are all highly interactive, so if you want to learn about the concept of salinity, you'll see on your screen a tub of water with a faucet and a salt shaker and a drain, and you'll manipulate and see the change in salinity. But schools also ask us for video courses, because if you're short a teacher or students out of school for a few, suspended or sick or whatever, or snow days. So, we have already created, with the request of the Department of Education, both algebra and geometry every single class of the year. So, if students for whatever reason are out, they don't have to miss that day's lecture. They can take, they can look at it through E-Media VA. Teachers also can use this as a flip model, so you can, you know, see the lecture at home and come home, come back and work within the classroom. So, depending on your strategies around new ways of learning and performance-based assessments, these, these video courses are a great tool. We're about to start earth science. We came back to our superintendents last spring and asked, what was the next course you'd like us to make? Earth Science was the unanimous request, and so we are about going into production any, any week now, so that'll be coming up pretty soon. Same page on page four, Virtual Virginia. The county takes, takes great advantage of Virtual Virginia. We've been operating it from day one. Some people may not understand that, but you had last year 185 students that took advanced placement, world languages, and this past two years, the state has had a full-time program, and one of your students took advantage of the full-time program. Moving on to page five, additional resources. We love to celebrate smart kids. So, I point to item number two, our PBS Writers Contest, kids K through five, write stories, illustrate stories, submit them, they get judged. The winners actually are part of a television program. We actually take their stories and animate them and put them on TV. You had, you had nine entries this past year. And of course, big highlight, I think you all know that this past year, York County won the Spelling Bee. Zwan Tran, I think, I hope you all know this, she's on the cover, by the way, of the impact statement, her and her dad. She represented this whole region up in DC this past year, so I know everybody was very excited about her winning this year's Spelling Bee. Boy, they're smart kids. And item number four, the Great Computer Challenge. We've been doing this for over 30 years, where we have competitions around various software programs and applications. You had three teams from Bethel Manor that participated, and the graphic design team actually came in third place, so congratulations to them. Next, page six, real briefly. We do lots of videos, I'm not going to get all of this, but you should note the very last sentence, the Education Now segments we do. What we do on, on my television stations, we have best practices from school divisions around the region, and Dr. Shandor was, has been on for quite a while, talking about the Fine Arts Magnet Program. So, he's one of our TV stars that is on WHRO on a pretty regular basis. Jumping quick, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but pages eight, nine, and 10 are, are the Family and Early Learner Services for pre-K and earliest elementary. You can see we have STEM vans. Our Kids Channel now can be streamed on tablets and phones. We have reading camps, we have coding camps, reading buddies, literacy vans, library corners, the list goes on. You can see the end of page 10, our vans especially have been out there, the STEM van and literacy vans have been out to your elementary schools quite a bit, quite a bit this past year, and love to continue to do that. So, again, lots of services available to, to the division, and again, it's all for $2 per student. So, finally, on page 11, the ROI. You invest $2 per student into WHRO. Last year, you received a value of savings of over $700,000. In your case, that was a 21-to-1 return on your investment. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Fantastic report, and we are aware of all the good things that WHRO is doing for our students, and we thank you. Any comments?
I, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the information you shared for our citizens and the, the board members here, and thank you, Brian, for coming tonight. Sorry I didn't get a chance to talk to you during our break. Apologize for that. But as a York County School Division Representative on the WHRO Board, look forward to our meetings and our continued partnership that we have, so certainly, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Our second presentation is Construction Report. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Haywood, board members. Mark Shearhardt, is he here?
Yes. He's hiding from you.
He's behind the podium. Mr. Shearhardt is now going to present the Construction Report. Thank you, Mark. Sorry, I didn't see you sitting behind there.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Chairwoman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Here's your Capitol Projects Report for the month of September. First of these I'd touch on is Yorktown Elementary School. This school is, obviously, the students are back in the school. We prepared, the architect and I prepared a punch list last Thursday for the, for the contractor, and they're in the process of working on these punch list items right now. They are also wrapping up some roof work up there. They have about maybe two, two more weeks of work on the roof, trying to get that building completely. It's, it's dried in, it will not remain inside the building, but we just have some metal trim work and things like that to get, finish up. They're continuing testing and adjusting the HVAC systems in there. As soon as that gets done, then they'll go ahead and commission the HVAC systems. Commissioning means that they're going to make sure that everything works properly, fans go on and off when they're supposed to, temperature goes up and down like it's supposed to. So, that's part of the commissioning, the HVAC systems. The thing that's really going on inside the school right now is they're preparing to replace the gym floor. Unfortunately, when we took out the old floor, we found that the, the concrete floor underneath the old floor that was in the gymnasium was wavy. There was, not wavy TV 10, but wavy concrete, and so there was, we wanted to make sure the floor was completely flat before we put the new floor in, and so the contractor's in the process of leveling out that floor. So, this is what the gym looked like on September 14th, and pretty much is what it looked like this morning. They, they did start this morning putting down the primer and putting down the leveler in the, in the gym. Basically, what it is, is liquid concrete, liquid mortar, and they just spread it out in the gym and to make, to make it level, make it flat. This is another picture I took of the front of the building. You can see there's no pink lift out in front anymore, construction equipment, and pretty much everything's gone out in the front. You can see the grass is starting to grow there again, and so they're all back in the building. I want to give you a picture of the interior of the school right as you walk in the entryway, but we're waiting for them to put the new letters up, and I'll give you a picture of that when that gets, happens.
That's a beautiful exterior.
I was talking to a father of a child who went to Yorktown Elementary School, and I said, well, here's a picture of what it used to look like, and this is a picture of what it looks like now. And he says, no, I'm not talking about the high school. I said, no, that's not, that's not the high school, that's the elementary school now. So, Bethel Manor Elementary School now, here's a small update on that one. We created a punch list last Friday, the architect and I, and the contractor's also working on that punch list actually this evening, and they are, they are waiting to commission the HVAC systems in this building as well. I took a picture there, it was Saturday, I think it was, of the gymnasium, not gymnasium, the cafeteria there now. You see this new duck work there, the red duck work. They've painted the entire cafeteria, new ceilings, new lights. These are the LED lights, they can dim them, whatever they want to for the, for their performances on the platform there. Right now, this, the way, this picture here shows how they're set up for Champions, their Champions Program. You can see the carpet there and stuff on the floor, so, but that's the way the cafeteria looks there. It's totally, totally renovated space now. Next project I'd like to touch on a little bit, little bit more in depth, is TAB Elementary School, and this, the architect is working on the construction documents now. He plans to have them to me by Friday. Part of this plan is not only replacing the HVAC and the roof there, is we, we needed to put the security vestibule into the building, that redesigned it for, putting the security vestibule into the building, wound up having us to, to redesign the main office space. So, because we're redesigning the main office space, we want to start in spring, pretty much like we did at Yorktown Elementary School, so we're planning to move the main offices and close the front entrance of the school on March 2nd. March 2nd is the half day, the students leave, and then we'll go ahead and move everything around and close that door and allow the contractor to start working and, during spring break. So, the first phase of this project will be the HVAC replacement, restroom renovations, new ceilings and interior doors, and hopefully, budget permitting and bids permitting, we will go ahead and replace the casework and, and install LED lights throughout the building as well. And then the second phase will be the roof replacement, roof and window replacement. And the roof of this building is not atrocious, so it's not leaking really badly yet, but we want to get it on, you know, get the new roof on there before it does. So, it's moved, moved to the second phase, second phase because of the fact, the, with the design interior of the building, we're taking out pumps, we're taking out the boiler room and things like that as we renovate these restrooms, and that forced the, forced the roof to get into the second phase. So, some of the things the project does include is creating the security vestibule, I mentioned already, redesigning the main office area, replacing the heating and air conditioning systems, renovating large restrooms, new ceilings and doors, painting throughout, installing new roofs, and replacing some windows and exterior doors. It does not include replacing the heating and air conditioning in the new six classrooms, because those, that, that system is only a few years old now. This is a satellite view from Google of the top of the school there. You can see on the right-hand side of the, of the picture there, you can see Big Bethel Road, you can see the loop at the front of the school there, you can see the new vehicle parking in the upper right-hand corner, and then in the middle of the picture, you can see the bus loop there. So, the plan is to close that current middle, middle, current main entrance there with the red arrow is, and then to go around, around the side of the building there and have the temporary main entrance there on the side, and this would occur again on March 2nd. That, one of the reasons that side entrance was chosen is because there was a classroom there we can convert into the main office, and also, that entrance is in view of the vehicle parking there. They can see it straight across from the parking there across the bus loop. So, this is a drawing of the interior of the building. I wanted to show you, see where the current main entrance is right there on the right-hand side of the picture, and the dividing line here for the blueprints, the blueprints were so large and complicated, the architect had to cut the, basically cut the building in half, put one half on the one blueprint and the other half on another blueprint. So, when I show you the next sets of slides, you'll see the front half of the building or the back half of the building, so that's why I showed you that. So, you see here, the front, this is the front part of the building here, you see the red line. So, the, this front part, you see the large oval there, that area will be completely, completely gutted. The restroom's in there, the teacher's lounge, the conference rooms, the principal's office, workroom, everything will be taken apart in that, that space, and that'll be starting during spring break. We will also be redesigning a canopy that comes out front there. I told the architect we wanted to update the building, and then you can see here in the orange in the top of the picture here, where the new main entrance, or the temporary main entrance will be on the side of the building and the temporary main offices there. That classroom will be divided up pretty much like we did at Yorktown, into a main office, a workroom, and a principal's office. This is what the exterior of the building looks like now, that front canopy, a little bit dated. This is what the architect came up with. So, we think it's a dramatic change, raising up the underside of it there, opening it up, lightening it up, making it much more inviting to the front of the building. This is another picture of the, another drawing of the front of the building. I wanted to accent a few other places, a few other items on here. You see in the top there, we're renovating the restrooms in the preschool classrooms, and you see the new security vestibule there with the double sets of doors. And then, one of the other benefits of reorganizing this main entrance, main office area, is we're able to carve out a separate, a second conference room. They're having a lot of issues trying to have meetings for IEP and things like that in, in a one, with one, only one conference room, so we were able to carve out a second conference room for the, to allow them to get their meetings in. This is a back half of the building here, and you see in the middle there, we're taking, in the center of that large circle, we're taking out the oval, we're taking out the boiler room there, we're taking out the pumps there, and that's going to enable us to renovate those two, those four bathrooms, four restrooms there, two for the girls, two for the boys, fully, fully renovate those rooms, new tile, fixtures, everything in those rooms. And then in the back hallway, we're not leaving these restrooms out here, we're going to also renovate those at the back of the school. That's the last part of TAB Elementary School, and I just want to touch briefly on the new elementary school A&E design. We're in the process of working through the final verbiage of the contract documents, and we, I just talked to the architect this morning, and we had some more clarifications now, and so we're bringing that to a close, and also, the construction timeline here is yet to be confirmed. It's based fully on how the residential development is going on, residential construction's going on, and also how the, what the student population is in our schools. And that's my last project for this evening. Do you have any, have any questions for me?
Gentlemen, any questions? I have one real quick. We've had not-so-good luck with leaking roofs. TAB Elementary, can that second phase wait for, until 2019?
We believe so. We believe so. It's, it's leaking where the old roof adjoins the walls, the old aluminum roof, and that's the roof that's, I think it's, I can't remember, it's 40 or 45 years old. So, it's, it's, it's done its time, but it's, I think it can hang in there for another year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We may now move to comments of citizens. As I call your name, if you will come forward, please, and give your name and address for the record. Direct your comments to the board, and you will have three minutes. Is it Carrie Snyder?
Ms. Haywood, Dr. Shandor, and members of the board. My name is Carrie Snyder. I live at 300 Shirley Road in Seaford. I have a home daycare, as well as students, I have my own students in York High and Yorktown Middle. We had, and we, I want you to know that I've gone protocol, I've gone to Mr. Lash, I've gone to Dr. James, and we, we don't seem to be coming to an agreement here. For 10 years, the children have gotten on the bus stop at my house, and this year, with this, we got a new system. The bus system is great, from what everybody says, and I'm really pleased that everything is going well there, but my children have to walk to the end of the street. The point that I keep getting emails back saying, well, so a lot of children, actually, I was told that Dr. Shandor's children have to walk a half a mile. Well, that's not the issue. I don't care if my children have to walk a mile. You know, all the children need exercise today. The issue is the fact that we have the scallop docks at the end of the street, and there is not enough room for them to walk. And when I wrote to doctor, to Mr. Lash, he sent me the guidelines to the new system, and one of the guidelines was that they need, they have a 10-foot easement. My children do not have a 10-foot easement to walk to the end of the street. I have a kindergartner that has to walk to the end of the street. I also have infants in my home, so I cannot walk these children down to the bus stop. So, I've had, I've had to hire someone that's not anybody else's concern, it just makes me feel that they're more safe that way, to walk them down there. So, I am asking if there is any way that we can make an exception and have a bus stop, so my children do not have to walk on that busy street. Now, Dr. James has come to our stop several times, and actually, the first day of school, after the bus was, picked up the children, he came down the road and he passed my driveway. Just before he got to my driveway, a big semi was coming down, or a truck was coming down as well. He had to get three-quarters off of the road in order to let the truck pass. Now, my point on that is, if the children were walking down the street and this was happening, it is not safe for them to walk down that street. I'm not trying to be, I, I'm not being a whining mom, I'm just proving a point that sometimes when we have new systems, there's always an exception to the rule. We do not have a 10-foot easement that Mr. Lash has said we have on Shirley Road. We also have the scallop docks, which I mentioned, who are very busy, and when there's a boat going in or out, when there's people coming and going, there's, it is not safe for those children to walk. Now, this year, I have a kindergartner, and I have, one week I have a kindergartner in- two third graders, fourth graders. The next week I have a kindergartner, three fourth graders, I'm sorry, three third graders and a fourth grader. Next year I gained two kindergartners. I do not feel that it's safe for them to walk on that street. We also have an issue on Bat Creek, the same thing. Now last week, the little girl on Bat Creek, a total stranger, stopped and asked her if she could show her her dog. I don't feel it is safe for the children. And I would like to see if that could be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jessica Day.
Hi there. Thank you, madam and the board. Jessica Day, I'm at 401 Old York Hampton Highway, Yorktown 23692. I'm actually here to discuss 300 Shirley Road where my son is in daycare. He's been there since he was in kindergarten, twice kindergarten. He's now in fourth grade. The distance walking is not the concern, as she said. It's, I've, I actually work at the scallop docks. Been there for 16 years. My mom's been there since I was four. I'm almost 40. So I know the scallop docks very well. My parents actually have a couple boats there. I know how many times neighbors call because of speeders. I know that the tractor trailers that come down, up and down the road, I know some of the subcontractors that we hired come down there. It's just, it can be very busy. And unfortunately, when we've had Dr. James down there, that he has not seen the full potential of this road when it's actually working. Right now, because of the storms, the boats have not been working. They're actually staying because they have to go out to the Atlantic to fish. And it's quite up there, like towards Massachusetts and New Jersey. So the boats don't go anywhere and they're probably not going to go nowhere for the next two weeks. So right now it's kind of calm and safe. But I'm really concerned about any of the kids that are on that main road of Shirley and our second Bat Creek right there that connects. It's not, nowhere for an elementary school child to be at all. And I just want to plead our case that please allow the bus to pick the children up at someone's house. I mean, the child, children should not be walking anywhere on that road, especially elementary school students. That's my concern. And that's pretty much it. And I want to say thank y'all for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Kathleen Howe.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Howe and I reside at 121 Lance Way, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. Excuse me. I am here this evening to discuss the possibilities of moving to a more traditional school start time for all students in York County. In addition to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, the National Heart, Lung and Blood Institute has now contributed their findings. They state students would benefit greatly from getting nine to 10 hours of sleep a night, although this is impossible due to the adolescent sleep cycle, which we've discussed with you in the past. A systematic review published in 2016 showed how school start delays affect students' sleep and other outcomes. Two of the six studies were randomized controlled trials and showed delaying school start times 25 to 60 minutes corresponded with an increased sleep time for these students averaging anywhere from 25 to 77 minutes per weeknight. Thus, the students were allowed to sleep later in the morning, they still went to bed the same time they always did, and they got more sleep. That said, they found that the academic benefit of later start times would be equivalent to about two additional months of schooling, which they calculated would add about $17,500 over the course of their lifetime earnings. The Rand Corporation just completed the model, the first model to discuss the nationwide costs and benefits of later school start times. They also stated that it would save the United States roughly $9.3 billion a year if all public schools started school no earlier than 8:30 a.m. The economic benefits come primarily from two sources. Better academic performance now equates to higher lifetime earnings later on. Well-rested students have better grades and you will have a significant decline in tardiness, absenteeism and teen car crashes, to name a few. This topic has been discussed almost monthly for the past year and a half and was first brought to the York County School Board's attention roughly 11 years ago. I'm going on my 13th year here and I was one of the speakers back then when my children were still in elementary school. Some concerned citizens of York County as well as myself want to know what we need to do in order to provide the students of today a better opportunity to enhance their academic performance and possibly save someone's life. Hopefully with the new transportation system that Dr. James has implemented this year, it will bring us one step closer to finding a solution because as you know, our lives are in today's children's hands.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Chandor and audience. My name is Carol Bauer, 410 Lakeside Drive. I've come here to talk to you about your action item, October, being the Bully Prevention Month. I, I wanted to actually speak towards that because it's incredibly important, critically important for all of us. Most people don't realize just how big a problem bullying can be. Some people say kids will just be kids, they'll get over it. But really, it's different. And it doesn't end when you go home. Cyberbullying is becoming a common problem. Hiding behind a computer screen, many students think it's okay to say hurtful, mean and often untrue things. It's never okay to do that. In fact, telling someone they're fat does not make you skinnier. Telling someone they're stupid does not make you smarter. Telling someone they're ugly does not make you any more attractive. It hurts to see people ignore you, call you names, whisper about you. It, it's awful when people talk about your clothes, talk about your height, your family, about your laugh. Our LGBTQ students have a particularly hard time. So I have a challenge as we go into October to think about. Parents, I ask you to do your part by encouraging your children to be kind, doing your part to look at what you tweet, what you post, and to encourage kindness in your students. Staff, I also encourage you to make sure that you have a safe place for your students to feel respected and for them to feel comfortable. Also to teach empathy and acceptance. And students, for you, I have a challenge for you. Every day you have a choice about your actions, you have a choice about your words. I ask you that you choose to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's ends it for the citizens wanting to speak to the board. We move now to matters by board members. Gentlemen, do you, I'll start with Dr. George, if you have anything.
Yes, thank you. Let me pull this up here. Yeah, just a couple of highlights from, actually from District 5 here. Congratulations to Jenny Gu, a senior at TAB High who was named a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist this month based on her PSAT scores. Only about 10% of the juniors who take the PSAT become semifinalists. Congratulations there. Also want to highlight the outstanding accomplishments of TAB Middle Schools Teresa Golderman, who was recognized by the state as the Region 2 Teacher of the Year, which encompasses all school divisions in Hampton Roads. She was one of the eight finalists for the State Teacher of the Year. And while she was not ultimately selected, we are extremely proud to have her represent all our great YCSD teachers. And finally, I'd like to share a plug for the TAB Elementary PTA and all PTAs for that matter. The TAB Elementary PTA is excited about another year and is recruiting support for committees and events. No amount of time is too small. I hope you will find time to support their annual Walk-a-Thon fundraiser that will be held in November. And welcome to the school year. We're off to a good start, I believe.
Yes, we are.
And thank you for your words, Ms. Bauer. Random acts of kindness, what it's all about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Really have nothing to report, just welcome back to the new school year. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Exactly. Welcome back. And tonight's meeting is an example of what, what we like, why we enjoy what we do to recognize our students. Mr. Richardson mentioned his participation with WHRO. I am working with, representing the board to the York Foundation for Public Education. And its first meeting was last Thursday, the annual meeting and donor reception. So I'm looking forward to, to working with the foundation. And with that, financial matters, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Looking at the operating budget for the school system, the received federal income, if you compare it to last year's, which is right at a million dollars, we're at a 1.3 almost million dollars received to date. And the reason being is it's a large difference is the impact aid payments have come in a little higher for fiscal year 18 at this time. The other difference that I noted was in instruction. This time last year, we had 2.3 million encumbered. This year, just a little less than a half a million encumbered. And that's because the New Horizons and Paces purchase orders will post in September, so that, that amounts will catch up. We also had a little bit of increase in pupil transportation. That's from five new buses that we purchased in July. There were three regular 77-passenger buses and two special needs buses. And the food service report, there was a difference in the year-to-date received from last year was $4,800. This year was $10,900 plus dollars. The reason being the prepaid cafeteria sales increased this year, so we had quite a bit more money come in. The other difference was in the prior year for food service, they, they bought some extra things they needed in the food service, a cargo van, because we store a lot of food at a location and we need to transfer that food to the, that's in a freezer to the other schools. It'll have a lift gate on it to move supplies. There's new keypad scanners at all the schools and display monitors for when the, the children go through the line at the, at the schools. So the last thing is the significant expenditures for the month of August. And there was $103,000 and 500, $103,400, $540 that was spent for replacement kitchen equipment at TAB Elementary School. That was as a result of the fire that they had there some months back. And we were waiting to see if the insurance company wanted us to clean the equipment or if we were able to clean the equipment or replace it. We ended up having to replace it and buy new. The increase, or the expenditure with Calico Industries Kitchen Equipment, $38,000 and $172,000 was replacement equipment for kitchens paid for out of the food service budget out of their operations. And then the last page are a lot of expenditures. They're all the construction costs for the renovations at Bethel Manor Elementary and York Elementary. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Do you want to move approval? Would you like to move approval?
Yes, I would like to move approval of the financial.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George to approve financial matters. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. We move now to consent calendar and we have four items. The first under consent is consideration of approval of personnel actions. The second is consideration of approval of donations and the amount of $1,894.59. The third is consideration of approval to appoint the chief financial officer as plan administrator effective September the 26th, 2017 for the York County School Board defined benefit pension plan. And the last item is consideration of approval of minutes from a regular meeting on August the 28th, 2017 and a special meeting on September the 11th, 2017. Do we need to move any item from the consent calendar? If not, may I have a motion to approve, please?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the consent calendar. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. We have one action item, consideration of approval of a proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month for October of 2017. Dr. Chandor.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood, board members. As you just heard from one of our teachers about bullying, bullying affects almost 30% of the youth in our country each year. And it takes many, takes many forms, including verbal and physical and most recently in cyberspace. And can happen in many places, on and off school grounds. It is important for parents, students, teachers, coaches and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. All of our schools will participate in Unity Day on October 25th. Unity Day is sponsored by the National Center for Bullying Prevention. It is a day where individuals are asked to wear orange to symbolize a united stand against bullying while supporting kindness, inclusion and acceptance. A complete list of activities per school will be available for board members and families who wish to participate in or attend different school-based activities. Activities and approaches are used all year long to support students and families in ensuring our schools are caring, warm and inclusive places to learn. The month of October will be recognized as Bullying Prevention Month in all York County schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Make a motion, Madam Chair. We approve that item, that resolution.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George to approve the proclamation. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. And again, piggyback on, piggybacking on what Dr. Chandor said, this is very, very important. And we look forward to the activities for the month of October. We move to policy. We have two items under discussion. Dr. Chandor.
Yes, I want to ask Dr. James if he'll please come to the podium to discuss just briefly
Thank you, Dr. Chandor. Ms. Haywood, members of the board, you have before you this evening, Section C, General School Administration of the Policy Manual for discussion. I can tell you that revisions to this section have been reviewed by the superintendent, the assistant county attorney and chief officers. Several of the proposed changes to this policy section are a result of alignment with the Virginia School Boards Association Policy Manual, the Constitution of Virginia, the Code of Virginia and the Virginia Administrative Code. Some of these revisions are just editorial in nature, however, some of the others are more involved changes. I'll take a few moments to discuss with you briefly two sections or files of this section that relate to the duties of the superintendent and also reporting acts of violence and substance abuse. File CBA is entitled Qualifications and Duties of the Superintendent. You may notice in the document, several, the language from the existing policy have been struck through. And we are now incorporating the Virginia School Boards Association policy language for this same file. The reason is for clarity and ease of understanding what the duties of the superintendents are. It doesn't change the duties, but I think when someone reads the policy manual, it'll make it easier to understand. I see Dr. Chandor really likes that. And if you'd like, we could add more duties, board, if you, if you'd like me to do that.
That's not really funny.
File CLA, Reporting Acts of Violence and Substance Abuse. This does not change our practice, it's just put our practice into policy. So many of these acts of, acts of violence are required to be reported by the Code of Virginia, whether we report to law enforcement or law enforcement replace, reports it to us. So all of this is now in policy. So with that, that concludes my report. You have any questions for me?
I don't think so. We will see it a couple more times.
Yes, ma'am. You'll see it next month for first reading.
Thank you. And the next was the second?
Yes. Mr. Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, is going to come up and discuss revisions of DGCY, the School Board Policy Manual. Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Chandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. Staff is proposing a revision to Board Policy DGCY entitled Fundraising Activities Conducted by Schools. The, the purpose of this revision is to allow and permit staff to conduct fundraising activities. The school division has seen an increase in the use of crowdfunding sites such as GoFundMe and DonorsChoose. And we currently don't have a policy that addresses that activity. So that's the, that's the, that's the purpose of the, of the revision. I, I would like to add that if the board adopts this change, we'll have a SOP that will provide the framework in which will provide the framework in which staff will conduct these activities.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions?
Just one question. Is the policy you're looking at, does it include a way to audit those funds in some way, maybe print out the page of what was raised and then show where it was spent, or anything like that?
That's not currently in draft, but that's something certainly we will entertain and look at and see how we can, you know, have staff kind of monitor the use of those, those sites.
Thank you.
This was, this is, I'm sorry. Um, this is fundraising conducted by schools. I have received email that I've passed on about people, individuals who want to fundraise, and we know we cannot. So I think for that, from that particular email, do we address, would you all, administration address that specific response back?
We are.
We, we, okay, okay. Fantastic, thank you. Alrighty. We have no first or second reading, so Dr. Chandor.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood, board members. So we've enjoyed a great beginning of the school year, filled with various activities and excitement. I want to share just a couple brief events that I attended. So I also attended with Ms. Haywood, and Mr. Medford was there as well, the York Foundation for Public Education Annual Meeting, which was held last Thursday evening. It was a fantastic event, a partnership between the school division and the foundation. It was a great opportunity for us to, to work closely with the donors, and I think we're off to a really good start with the foundation. Next, in reference to Dr. George's comments related to Ms. Goldman, we're really proud of, of her, of all of her accomplishments this year. Teacher of the Recognition and Awards at the Governor's Ceremony held in Richmond, a number of our team members attended that event. And while she didn't win that, you know, that accolade to be the Teacher of the Year, we know that she is an amazing, amazing teacher, and she represented all of our teachers really, really well. And finally, as a reminder, please take time, parents, to visit your school during back-to-school nights. Ironically, my back-to-school night is tonight, and I can't be there, but my wife is there. So please attend those events so that you can be involved and engaged with your children and their teachers, and this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? And if, Doc, you want?
I was going to ask Dr. James if he can come to the podium just briefly. We had a comment this evening from citizens, and I just wanted Dr. James to go over briefly for what our practice is for reviewing bus stops. Dr. James?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Chandor, Ms. Haywood, and members of the board. I can tell you that we have received some concerns about bus stops this year, and by talking and working with the transportation staff, the volume of concerns has been no different than any other beginning of the school year. But whenever we do get a concern, we take it very seriously. A site visit is conducted by staff members, and sometimes law enforcement is also invited to that stop to get their opinion on any safety concerns related to that particular stop. After all that's reviewed, then we'll make a decision about whether that should be a stop because that is a valid safety concern, but sometimes when we look into those matters, it's a matter of convenience. So that's not one of the criteria we use for changing or evaluating a bus stop, whether it's convenient. And I can tell you many of the concerns that we have received about having the bus stop in front of a child's house rather than the designated stop for that community, and we hope to use those stops from time on in now, so we don't constantly move bus stops back and forth every year.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Any comments, questions? Thank you, Dr. James.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, we're in need of a closed session. If there's, someone can take us into closed session, please.
Madam Chair, I move the York County School Board convene in a closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to personnel exemption, Section 2.237-11A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George for the York County School Board to convene in closed session. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. Thank you, the board is in closed session.